Apologize for that delay. That's why when we were talking about this afternoon, we wanted to make sure we had two, at least two meetings so we could spread out some of that, that extent. Like I said, this was, there is some, some things out of our control and attempts at cooperation with the city to try and do these things to, you know, it's just put us a little, little further behind on the schedule and it got us to this point. So, not something I assure you, I can, not something I was wanting to do, it's this quickly if, if need be.
So you're looking at adding this election with potential water sewer type things?
No, no, we were originally, but since because of the-
So who's gonna pay for the special election, that cost?
The Parks.
The Parks Department will pay for the special election.
Okay, Mickey?
In that regard, we've been waiting since November to get a cost for a special election. County hasn't bothered to give us the answer yet, even though I keep bugging them. When is the, what's it, the 1% 10-year tax that goes to parks? Is that what that is?
No.
No, this is-
No, not this one. I'm saying, you've got, don't you have a-
We have a quarter of that one.
Okay, is that a 10-year thing? Isn't that up soon?
No, that's permanent.
Oh, okay, I thought that had sunset at 10, they doesn't say, let's combine them.
No, this, this was the, the one that was, had a four-year-
Had the sunset, okay, I thought the other one had 10-year sunset. Just, I don't know how this is gonna work, might have to get together with him, but if you have a ballot worded like this, it's gonna cause a problem. You have to make it very simply worded for the voters.
We, we basically had to work right off of what we had last time to-
Okay, I was gonna say, or put the answer you want as number one, but I would highly suggest that to go along with the ballot, that either on the ballot, which sometimes you can do and sometimes you can't, or on a separate paper that goes on every single table or voting machine, that explains in plain English, this is to keep it going, this is to end it. You know, is this tax on sales, is it on private prop, on personal property, or what's on-
Tax.
Okay, that needs to be put on there. Trust me, they will do their first thing or nothing. So, just making that clear.
Sure.
Any other questions?
I just wanna say, I, I have concerns that there are other things in this city where we have greater, more dire needs. Black Bass Dam is one of them, and the capital improvements that are needed to the auditorium are another. I will vote for this because I think it ought to be presented to the electorate, but I am concerned about these other needs.
I would add Lake Leatherwood Dam to that list also.
Well, part of, part of Lake Leatherwood Dam, because it is gonna need some serious work, gonna be taken care of with this and addressed. It's not, it's getting to the point, not like Black Bass Lake Dam, but I'm hoping with our, when we finish our one project down here on Armstrong Street, then the next grant, which is gonna be going toward Black Bass Dam. But, that is a priority of mine. Did somebody else, Mickey, go ahead?
I've stated before that I've raised five kids here. Look around town, except for now, recently, one or two exceptions, there is nothing for children to do here. When my five kids were growing up, it was working job, bussing tables. When you were 14, you started working. There was nothing, no youth clubs, no things going on at the odd at that time, none of this stuff. This ordinance gives the children of our town a much-needed place for activities and to do things that kids are supposed to do, instead of meandering around town, causing problems, doing drugs, whatever. This thing, Leatherwood, is the only thing that the kids really have to do. There are now a couple little things here and there, that's it. There should never be a problem in 1% going to our children. They are the ones who are Eureka.
One eighth of 1%.
One eighth of 1%, yes. David?
I'm careful with 10%.
I agree with Christie. If I was voting on this to just do it without it going to an election, in all honesty, I wouldn't. And the reason I wouldn't is because of the infrastructure issues and the other needs within the city. But, I will vote for it because I would like to see the public weigh in on it and just let them make the decision. And I agree with her on that.
You didn't have kids either.
Got any comments?
Well-
Bob?
I would agree with both of them, and I will vote three times to pass it, but I will not vote for an emergency clause. When you have something, you know, for four years, with a deadline coming up four years ahead, there's no justification for an emergency.
Mr. McClure?
I'd like to make a motion to be, assign this ordinance a number and put it on its first reading for passage.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay.
The ordinance number will be 2254, an ordinance calling for a special election to refer the issue of amending ordinance 2176 to the voters of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, for their acceptance or rejection, declaring an emergency to exist and for other purposes. Whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has made a review of the current tax collection for the Parks Department, and whereas in the opinion of the City Council, the citizens' will should be heard on this issue of removing the four-year limit on the existing levy. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that the county, section one, that the County Board of Election Commissioners is hereby notified as required by Arkansas Code annotated, that ordinance 2254 has been passed, directing that a special election be held as soon as practical, but not less than 60 days nor more than 90 days from the date of passage, to refer to the voters, the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, the issue of approving or rejecting the removing of the four-year levy and collection limitation period, and allowing the following language, adding the following language to section one of ordinance 2176, quote, "said one eighth of 1% shall continue to be levied until duly abolished as provided by law," end quote, section two. That said election should be held on June 13. If we leave it blank, we could still have success in passing it.
Okay.
If, if we don't give it a date, it won't do us any good.
It's one of the four points, it has to be of the ordinance.
Unless you're gonna, I mean, it'll, it'll invalidate its ability if it effect.
June 13. Section three, that the ballot to be used is as follows. Proposed issue, proposed by the Eureka Springs City Council, the issue of approving or rejecting the removing of the four-year levy and collection limitation period, and adding the following language to section one of ordinance 2176, "said one eighth, 1% shall continue to be levied until duly abolished as provided by law." Four, ratification and approval of removing the four-year levy and collection limitation period of one eighth, one cent, established by ordinance 2176, and adding the following language in section one of ordinance 2176, quote, "said one eighth of 1% shall continue to be levied until duly abolished by law," end quote. Against, the second one is against ratification and approval of removing the four-year levy and collection limitation period on the one eighth of 1% established by ordinance 2176, and allowing the following language, adding the following language to section one of ordinance 2176, quote, "said one eighth of 1% shall continue to be levied until duly abolished as provided by law," end quote. Section four, that sections two and three of ordinance 2176 shall remain the same. Section five, repeal clause. All ordinance is resolutions as far as thereof in conflict herewith, or hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
Mr. McClure? Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 2254 on its first reading.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. McClure?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to suspend the rules and place ordinance 2254 up for its second reading by title only.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Etchard?
We just went right to vote without discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought-
No, I tell you what, let's just leave it that way. I'm, I'm gonna abstain.
Yes.
Ms. Adamson?
Ah, no.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
No.
Two, two, this is odd, wait a minute. One, two, three, three, two, one.
What's your signal?
Three.
Right, three yeses, two no's, one abstention.
Okay, I wrote yes.
Four, two, one. Ordinance number 2254, an ordinance calling for a special election to refer the issue of amending ordinance 2176 to the voters of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, for their acceptance or rejection, declaring an emergency to exist and for other purposes.
Mr. McClure? I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance, let it read the ordinance second reading.
Second.
All right, discussion?
If you, if you have removed the clause for, um, emergency clause, you've already written it into here as an emergency. Is it an emergency?
No, we read that the third time.
On the third one, you would get-
After the third one.
After the third one.
After the third one, it's from that.
Right, okay, any further, David?
So, the second reading puts it online for the 13th, is that why that's being done? Because there's three readings, this is the first time it's come in, nobody's had a chance to come to public comments, that we're kinda shortening that, and I, I'm just a little concerned.
We have to give six months notice.
Mr. McClure? Well, and, and I understand what, what, what David's saying about that, but I'm okay with that because it's, it's a tax that's already in existence. Uh, the vote's not gonna, it's gonna be up to the public to decide it anyway, so, you know, they're gonna, if, if they're not aware of it, they've got, what is it, March, April, May, June, they've got nearly 90 days, so.
Seventy-eight days.
Yeah, so I, yeah, I think there's plenty of time for anybody to, to everyone to be informed and wants to be informed.
Mickey?
Um, not regarding any of the, David, the numbers are wording in here. It takes the Election Commission at least 60 days to get their act together in regards to the ballots and election day.
Bob?
Well, that was my, I had a question first. If we do the third reading on April 5th, we're still on your timeline to the June 13th?
Trust me, this group, you don't wanna slow down.
I'm, I'm comfortable doing the second reading tonight, but I will not support doing the third reading tonight for two reasons. Number one, I think we need to have a two-week delay to let people contact us. Number two, I just stated I was opposed to the emergency clause, and if a whole bunch of people wanna connect, you know, contact me to try to change my mind on that, I would like to give them the opportunity. I don't, don't wanna do third reading tonight, but I'll be happy to do second.
That gives us-
Mickey?
Okay, I'm highly confused by the various comments. If we are voting to put something before the public to say yea or nay to, why do we need a time period for them to talk to us? I, I'm totally lost on this. I don't get it, somebody explain.
Peg?
I like people to talk to me about stuff, you know, I mean-
Well, that's what going before the people is-
Yeah, but I mean, if they talk to you about it, I mean, maybe they don't like the wording. I don't know.
You heard what Justin said, that's the wording that has to be used.
All right.
Cause I didn't like it either, but that's how it has to be.
Okay, let's-
Well, I'm confused, I still am waiting to understand.
Any other discussion?
I just, I just wanna be perfectly clear on, on, on the issue of putting it off two more weeks. If, if, that, that works-
Absolutely.
But, but the emergency clause would have to be invoked that night, in order to make it work.
Yes.
Okay. So everyone knows that if, if their constituents contact them, they need to be able to explain that that's what the process is.
And that this is going up to the vote of the people.
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna be, yeah.
That's what this is all about.
Point to the, just on the timeframe frame of it, again, like I said, that ideally, at least we have a couple weeks for it to go through, and again, we, the timeframe is regrettable, but the thing to know about the emergency clause just as a consideration, whether you're mad at me or us about it or not, is that if we don't do that on the next meeting, then we'll have a whole new tax, tax initiative that we would have to go through. So then it would not be a renewal. So that does change the dynamics of it just a little bit, yes ma'am?
I would just like to point out, this is the second time that Parks has come with an emergency, and then, that I recall, the last time was with a grant that had not, had to be submitted in the next week, and I think that, and he knew about the grant long enough ahead of time to have come to council about it.
That grant was a little convoluted and through multiple people and through that, so I, but I do, I take full responsibility for that.
I don't wanna see this again.
I don't either, I didn't wanna come tonight with it, I assure you. Yeah, that's not a, something we wanted to do, but, you know, life is life, and like I said, this was a complicated, fuzzy issue with lots of calls to Little Rock for very, like I said, not, not just in the last two weeks, and, or in the hurry on this for months. I, we've known about this tax the entirety of my tenure here, and we've been working towards it, so it's not been a, we're, we're certainly not something we wanna do. I guess is how we sum that up, so.
All right, we are, where are we on, on vote for?
Voting on approving on the second reading.
Okay, is that by roll call? No. Okay, all those in favor of passage of this for the second reading, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Abstaining.
Okay, so the yeses are?
I'm sorry.
Who voted yes?
I voted yes.
Two?
Could you clarify what we're voting on for me?
Yes, approval of the second reading.
You want now, approval of the second reading?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm a yes.
Okay, so, three yeses.
David abstained.
And you, so same thing, three, two, one. Four, two, one.
Thank you.
Do I have to read it? Did you read it?
I did.
Okay. All right, thanks. Okay, uh, get a motion to, for discussion of East Mountain speed bumps.
I so move.
Get a second?
Second.
Um, the way the city ordinance reads is if somebody has five signatures, they can get a speed bump.
Do what?
The way the city ordinance reads, if somebody present, presents a petition to me with five signatures or more, they can put a speed bump on there.
Can, not have to.
Same, can, at the same time, somebody presents a petition with five signatures or more, they can have it removed. Mr. McClure?
So we got enough signatures to remove all the speed bumps in town?
On East Mountain anyway.
Oh.
Probably all in town if we, no.
I'm so confused.
Say, may I, may I finish?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
That's okay, and, and you thought I was done already.
I got that.
And I've been done a long time. The, uh, I personally, I think that this is an administrative matter, and it's not really, it doesn't need to come to our bailiwick.
All right. Well, the reason I did was because we had so many petitions, I felt like it was up to the council to make a decision what they wanna do. They wanna make a decision of me, that's fine too. All right, Mickey, you were first, I think.
I'm, I'm so confused on this whole thing that's going on. On Emporia where I live, once we paved Anderson, which made a shortcut to avoid town, our traffic went from like five cars a day to about a zillion. So I understand through with the going on. We have two speed bumps on the street, coming down the hill and right in front of my house. Not that it does any good, look at my crushed car, okay? Um, yeah. People with fancy cars slow down, other people just ride over it, they don't care. I do not recall ever, even with windows open in the summer, hearing thump, thump, but then again, maybe it's a difference in the speed bump, between the one I have and what they put in, I haven't looked at those over there. Um, I agree, we've gotta keep our people safe, and we've gotta do something. We cannot afford a table. If they wanna do a fundraiser, give us some money, we could, but I have no problem whatsoever in putting in a third speed bump. But I also agree with what Terry said, this is administrative, and we are here to hear, hear the people facilitate as we can, to the limits of our financial extent that we have.
Bob?
I just wanna point out that, that one of the presenters last time, who was now wanting speed bumps removed, and several of the signers to have them removed, were people who signed originally to have them put in. It's fine, it was an experiment, we all knew it was an experiment, to see if they would work, and it's fine to change your, you know, change your mind, but it's not that the city has done something wrong. I think you tried your best, and I think that we still need to continue to have the police department look into the situation and, and try to resolve it so that, you know, they're controlling the speeding and, and, you know, with or without speed bumps, there's, you know, it's an, it's an administrative police decision, as far as I'm concerned.
Peg?
I agree, it's an administrative thing, I think the police department, police department handling it, sounds great. There was also, just to throw a little pedal into the pond, somebody said, let's put a third speed bump in as we go down.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
David?
I agree, I think we should shuffle it over to you and let you suffer with it.
Let you shuffle it over to the police department.
Move it on.
I agree that it's an administrative matter. I wonder about the wisdom, if there is truly a provision in the code that requires us to put a speed bump in because five people have signed a petition, or to remove it because five people have signed a petition, whether that should truly be in our city code.
Well, that's something we can look at, but it is in the city code. And I don't remember how or when.
It's ancient, I think.
We have one that says you can't land a plane out here on Main Street.
I, I would like that to be continued to the next meeting and address that issue.
Do that under agenda setting, and, uh-
Mr. McClure?
Mr. Mayor, if, if, if you're, uh, wanting to dissipate the heat on this, I mean, that's, I'm willing to make a motion to remove the speed bumps from East Mountain.
I disapprove.
I, I can go ahead and take it, it depends on the council. If you get a second, we can, we can go from there, otherwise-
I think we really need to let the police work this out.
I'm pushing it up.
All right, motion dies, relax a second. Any further discussion? All right, we'll move on to the next order of business. Discussion of truck for cemetery.
Motion to, uh, to discuss.
Second.
Okay. Uh-
You know what?
We are, uh, we have two members of city council sitting on the cemetery commission also. Um, we are, and we've talked within the, the staff, I understand your need for a truck, and I think we are trying to, uh, we're gonna do our best to try to find one. Uh, I think the issue of trying to, uh, and we're talking with the city attorney, of trying to, um, do as your suggestion was taking any of the, uh, the city, if, if the offer was for you all to take the, uh, vehicle from the, from the parks, which you said you didn't want, but you'd suggested go ahead and auction it off and splitting the proceeds between the two, and according to the city attorney, uh, that's not legal, because that is Parks property. Parks bought it, and Parks can disperse with it. So, Rob, Bob?
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I, I, you know, this has pitted the cemetery commission against the Parks commission, and I would just like to say that it really should never have happened. And it could have been avoided, you know, you have regular contact with Parks commission because he comes to your meetings every Tuesday morning, or, you know, every Tuesday morning you have your department head meeting. In the future, when the city has anything to give away, I think that you as mayor have a responsibility to always make sure that you include consideration of those people who you don't sit with every week. And that was the source of the problem. We don't have a problem with Parks being the neediest for a truck. What we had a problem with was no opportunity to present our case, and when we, you know, our only option was to complain about the giving of the truck to Parks, which made us look like, you know, we're Parks enemy. That's, yeah. And it could have been avoided, and I hope that we, that it'll be avoided in, in the future.
Right taken. David?
The issue that, that I think bothered me the mo, the most about this whole issue is that the part-time gardeners are using their own vehicles in the cemetery. I consider the cemetery to be a significant historical component of this city that deserves the same respect that Parks gets. And to hear that Parks has an old beat-up Liberty they're gonna sell to buy some kind of electric vehicle, which really doesn't seem to be as important to me as the cemetery to have a truck, that, that concerns me. And I'm wondering if you brought up the fact that two of the cemetery people are council-sitting here, and that would be the vote. So, if we went ahead and made a motion and they abstained, that would leave four of us to vote, that's still a majority, and I would almost like to see us go ahead and have an opportunity to vote on that tonight.
But I don't understand what you wanna vote on.
That, that vote that the cemetery get the truck. That's what would be my motion if I was making it. I don't-
Point of order, I thought that the truck belonged to the Parks commission and could not by law be transferred to-
Public Works.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The truck, the truck was going from the building department to Parks.
Okay.
Because in my opinion, the Parks was needing it more-
Okay, I, I'm sorry, misunderstood.
Than the cemetery commission, and I was saying that the cemetery commission, if we will try to, our best to find a truck for the cemetery commission. Mr. McClure?
Well, I mean, the, the cemetery commission, it just, it's just, it's never been at the forefront of anybody's mind. And it's, and it's, you know, it's unfortunate because it's, it's, it is an integral part of the city, and, and, um, so I, I, you know, what I think, uh, it was, it was not, they were not intentionally neglected, it's just that it was just nobody ever thought about. That, that's all.
Well, well, no, it's not, it's not, no, no, it's not worse, Bob, and it's, by any
means. Uh, but, but I, what I would, what I'd like to see happen, because if, if the dead people could walk, they'd be here, but they're, but they can't, you know, there's no walking dead in town.
Most of the year they do.
That, well, I guess that's true. But, but I would like to see the city come up with $2,000, $2,500 and buy him a truck from somewhere, and I'm not sure where, but I'm, I'm willing to put that into a motion.
Okay. All right, and Mickey?
When we discussed this at a prior meeting, I thought we had agreed that you were gonna check and see who needed the truck more, Parks or the cemetery, because cemetery had not been included, because unfortunately, the cemetery in my 43 years has never been included. And until this commission, this year's, this newest commission, all of them have been doing so much to bring the cemetery to the public eye, so to speak, in regards to, we need this, we need that. They have been doing an absolutely marvelous job. We just did another parking lot fundraiser. Notice the sun burn? Frozen, now we burn. But this is the first time a commission has actually done stuff, and I really think, and I agree with a lot of what David- and I agree with a lot of what David said in regards to, we've got to get the cemetery as an active part of, when we have goodies, they get considered, no matter what it is. As far as the truck goes, like I said, I thought you were going to check with both places and see who needed it more. Um, I don't know that we have the money to just buy something that's usable, but this is something that we have to look at in regards to keeping them involved because we now have people who are pushing involvement, which is good.
Mr. McClellan?
I, I had the misfortune to have to, to attend to this, uh, it's a couple of weeks ago. And the limbs and branches that were lying around everywhere, if there was some way to get rid of them, I think they would have been halted. It was, it was, didn't look good. Sorry.
David?
I make a motion that the pickup truck from Public Works, the building department, be moved to the cemetery.
I think we have to go by need.
Is it from Public Works or is it from the building department?
From the building department.
Wherever, wherever it came from.
Building.
Building, from the building department to the cemetery commission.
Bob?
I think that, that...
Well, we got a motion on the table. I need a second.
I need discussion first.
No, we need a second, darling.
No seconds.
All right, Bob?
If there is a vote to give the truck to parks department, I didn't, I don't think that I will abstain because I don't have a conflict of interest, uh, I will be voting to give the truck to the parks department because it has become an issue, a divisive issue between the, the two commissions and, you know, it's, I, I will accept your commitment of getting a truck for the cemetery at some, you know, reasonable future point. I'm going to have my 70th birthday next month. I don't want to be 75 or older. You know, reasonable length of time. But I'd like to resolve this. I don't, you know, that, you know, sometimes things can just have a bad karma and feel about them. I would never be happy seeing that truck in the cemetery after the divisiveness that has caused during our two commissions. So I, I would, if it comes to a vote, I intend to vote to give the truck to parks department.
I want to say one thing. It's my fault for not including, for not considering the parks. You told me that you were needing a vehicle going through there and I apologize for not considering you more. Out of all the people sitting here at this table, I'm probably the most invested in that cemetery with my family.
Yeah, you got one foot in there.
I've got one, I've got a vacant spot in there and I've also got two grandparents and a mother and a father and an uncle buried there. So I'm very aware of the cemetery and the condition that it's in and the value of that. I remember very much the issues that have gone through in the past council with the cemetery and the cemetery has been a stepchild and I appreciate both of you guys being involved in what you all are doing. When I mentioned that you were both active on the city council, I just meant that you are promoting the cemetery more than any other...
Absolutely.
...commission in, in the past, it has been. It's neither, it's not a negative comment, that's a positive comment because I think cemetery has, and it needs work. Uh, and I know that it's struggling with, with finances and we, we bumped the budget up this year and I totally supported that so we could go ahead and do this. And, uh, in talking with our finance director, he and I both said, you know, our purpose is to try to find you a vehicle, one way or the other. You know, it isn't going to be a, a new $17,000 truck.
They don't make new $17,000.
Well, a used $17,000 truck, or whatever, yeah. But I think we can find something that, that your people can utilize and that, that was the whole point of this, so...
That's what I'm hoping. I'm happy.
Mr. Mayor, if, 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 uh, if, if y'all come across like a 25, that's something, that 25, you don't have to even come to us and ask for it, you can just do it. Yeah, good.
My understanding is both places, parks and cemetery are usable, using their own vehicles before this truck was available.
David?
I think to help this situation, I'm going to visit with Lonnie tomorrow and I'm going to with, um, redirect the stipend that I get from city council directly to the cemetery department for the rest of my tenure.
Wow.
And their money, and I will do that tomorrow.
All right, any further discussion? All right, let's move on to our...
Do we need to make, have a motion? Do we need to vote for you to give the truck to the...
Well, we need probably go back and redo our proclamation, I mean, our...
Resolution.
Resolution.
Send your email.
Bring the resolution back. So I'll include that.
Don't have one.
No, we don't have one.
We took the truck off and only did the one or two things.
Yeah, which is, which is add a new resolution at the next meeting.
We didn't just take the tires off the truck?
No, we didn't check the oil either. Uh, all right. Uh, that kind of brings us to the little budget review, uh, as a financial review, as we, we had a, um, get a motion to discuss.
Some of us.
Second?
Second.
What if we didn't?
Well, we wouldn't discuss it. That would be, uh, good news, bad news. As noted in our, uh, budget meeting earlier, uh, we are in, in our, this is a February, uh, budget that we had, where 16% of our fiscal year completed. Uh, we are roughly 6%, uh, 5% below our estimated revenues and our expenses are at 12%, which is good. I mean, we're still holding our expenses down, uh, and the department heads need a pat on the back for that. Again, but at the same point, we're roughly $65,000 in the red and a lot of that probably has to do with our sales tax. We noted that our sales tax was down, uh, approximately 7% uh, for the last month. And, you know, that, uh, we don't know, I mean, that's not an uncommon thing for us to be down this time of the year. I think we had a good month with our, um, spring break. There was a lot of people in town. I hope all the businesses did good. Parking lots were good. Uh, I don't have a copy of, of what our parking lot receipts were, are, that's always kind of a good indication, but I think it's up. Uh, and we had our sales, uh, I saw a lot of people with, with bags and so I'm sure that was up. So, you know, I'm hoping that our next month will show an increase and, and continue on. But it's still the point where, uh, our general fund and our, our general capital are down. And also, uh, which isn't unusual, is our sewer, uh, which is our Fund 80 is also showing the red. And that was, we had some utility costs and we also had some pump problems into there. So we had some, uh, professional services that are being expended right now. So hopefully we're going to level off on that. But that kind of brings you up to date on, on the, uh, budget review for the month. Yes, ma'am.
The, um, the budget as we received it and we get it every month, is that, uh, available to anybody that would come in and want to see that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Anything's available that we have in this city.
Yeah.
It's all, it's all, you know, transparent, it's all public awareness.
I just want to know if, you know, if somebody came in and say, I'd like a copy of the...
Yeah, they're all available.
Last month.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You bet. Um, all right, we got a new order of business, I think, um, which under, uh, would that be the public restrooms?
Yes, please.
Um, we get a motion to discuss?
Um, I'm making a motion to discuss the, um, public restroom availability in Eureka Springs on Sunday.
I'll second that, knowing where she's going.
Um, we had a great time with the cemetery commission, did the parking lot caper through Cornerstone Bank. Um, it was great and people would come to us and they'd park their car and they'd give us a little money and we'd chat with them and they'd say, where can I get, go to the restroom? We said, well, you go right down to transportation, go in there. Well, that was a bad idea because it's closed and it is an ADA bathroom and it was closed all day on Sunday. And, um, it would have been nice if that was open because I think that there's, that might be a sign on the bathroom down here near the auditorium, which by the way, I got a word from people that it was pretty nasty in there on Sunday. Um, the one next to the, that's inside the auditorium there. So it was not a good thing. A lot of people needed to use the restroom and, um, I don't know what the condition of the, the trolley building is and whether it can be opened for public use, but it was not open.
I don't know. I can't answer your question because, but I can find out. It should have been open. The trolleys were running on Sunday. I wasn't in town.
No, they weren't.
Apparently not during March yet.
They're closed on Sundays in, in March.
This is still March, that's all we configured.
Okay, that must be it.
Yeah, that, yeah.
So that's, you know, that's, uh, that's the problem. They're not open, they're not transit, if the trolleys aren't running, the transit isn't open. So, Bob?
I haven't been in that depot in over a year, but as I remember it, there's like ticket sales and stuff that are behind a counter that can be locked up and then you have the open lobby and then you have the restrooms. Why could not, you know, I think that somebody locks and unlocks the auditorium restrooms? Why, why couldn't the trolley building be open?
I'll have to find out.
You know, at least the time we were there from 8 until 3 or something, Sunday things sort of petered out after about 3, so...
I'll find out and see what I can find out and get back to you.
Cool.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. Um, okay, our next order of business is continuing discussion of the rates prior to our public hearing. You have a motion to discuss?
Wasn't there another thing?
We had a new one, smoking.
The smoking workshop.
That, is that under new or old business?
It'd be old business.
Unfinished business.
It'd be old business.
I'd put it under, uh, the workshop agenda because it's been discussed before.
Okay, that's fine. Oh, it comes up under unfinished?
I, I was thinking unfinished business because we hadn't talked about it before. Uh, get a motion to discuss the, the rates.
Some of.
Second.
Okay. Uh, obviously we had a couple of people in here today that I value their opinion very much and, and we have been talking with this, um, about our rates. We have gone through, I think, city council and, and the public realizes that one of the things we had was, uh, we have not been meeting our bond covenants. We've never met our bond covenants and one of the things we were trying to do and we have to do is to meet those. It's 120% of our water and sewer rates. Not just the water, not just the sewer, but a combination, the way the covenant reads. Uh, we, when I first came up, we, we were talking about what it would take to do this and we hit the, uh, the scenario of a 30% rate increase, um, and we saw what that would do to the, to the, uh, to the rates. I think it's our last bond, last scenario. We looked at doing some sort of a, uh, service fee, what I would call a bond debt fee and we, we talked about that. And since then, when I got to looking at this and got to trying to analyze more and listening to what the people were saying, and I think I submitted with you a third scenario, which is a combination, uh, in a sense, it still has a debt service fee, but what I've done was just increased the sewer rates, have not increased the water rates. So the water rates are staying the same. The sewer rates, uh, have been increased as noted, uh, on the chart, uh, from tier one, from $9.50 to $11.49. And tier two, it was going from $26.84 to $32.47. And tier three, where it was $1,430.61, would be $1,731. Plus what I'm calling the infrastructure improvement fee, which is basically your debt service fee of a flat rate for tier one of $5, tier two $10, and tier three $50. That would increase and give us, uh, our total increased revenue of, uh, 400 and, is that right? $459. 459, 459, $775. I'll wrap my tongue around this in a moment. Uh, one of the things I was, was looking at on this is by doing this, uh, what we're going to be able to do is pay off our 2008 revenue bond. Uh, and that's, that's one of the good things. Pay that off by 2020. What I was proposing and want city council to consider is go ahead and continue on with that same fee and apply it to our other revenue bond. And what this would do would allow us to pay that bond, the 2008 bond, and basically, I think, run that bond out, uh, somewhere. I think we'd basically be able to pay that off in about 2024 as opposed to 2027. And for the first time in the city of Eureka Springs, we would be debt-free on our water and sewer bonds. What this also means is if we do that, there, there's a lot of benefits, uh, but, you know, we can all realize that. But this is the third scenario that, uh, between, uh, my office and, and the finance departments come up with, uh, we ask ourselves, and over there on the side, I think you see it, says, does it meet the state law requiring operating the sewer rates to cover the operational costs? Yes, we're, we're doing that. Are we bringing this into our bond compliance? Again, yes, we are. And does this pay off and fund a five-year debt payoff? Yes. Uh, and this does require, uh, and help us with the projected revenues. And again, is it fairly distributed? We think it is. Mr. McClellan?
It's a 17 and a half, 17 and a half percent rate increase on sewer. Uh, it's, uh, I think that's right. Um, it's, uh, with no increase on water.
Correct.
And then, and then the, the, what do you call the other fee? What's it?
Well, I'm calling it, uh, an infrastructure improvement fee, basically paying off debt service.
Okay. So what, yeah, whatever moniker you put on it, I mean, it's, it's fine. It's, it's, it's pretty simple, uh, and it certainly does appear to work.
David?
Well, if you listen to the people that, that came in to speak, this, this is what they asked for. This was it. It's just, if you don't have sewer, you, I mean, if you don't have sewer, you're not paying. And you're paying, and your water's not going up. The hook to me was, I, I like the litmus test over here where you took some of the hot topics and, and you listed out what they were going to do. And I also like the fact that the emphasis is on paying off the bond indebtedness because the sooner the bond indebtedness is paid off, that means there is more money available in that department for infrastructure. And there's the hook. I would, I would hope, and I, I guess you did figure it out, or Lonnie did, or somebody, of that one bond at 2024 is, what is that? Just about six years away? Uh, and other than just patching stuff now, that means in six years, the city can take a tremendous amount of money and hit the infrastructure for the first time ever and really go through this town. And that, that's a big hook. Sorry, that's, that's a big thing.
Christie?
Um, I, I disagree that it's answering the people's comments in that it's everyone, both water accounts and sewer accounts that are paying this. So if somebody is simply receiving, uh, water, they are going to have to pay this INI fee as well, not, not just the sewer people. And I've had cause to look at the, at the entire chapter on municipal sewer systems and I, it's really very clear to me that the intention under state law is that the sewer fees cover all costs, not just operational costs, but also the bonds that, um, were used to pay for... to pay for, or that we're paying on in order to build the sewer system. So I, this is my favorite alternative provided as yet, but I think it is still wanting in that it is requiring people that do not require any sewer service to pay towards that sewer service. I think it's in violation of state law.
Ricky?
I personally think that that INI fee is paying towards infrastructure, not sewer. All this money that's coming in, in this scenario goes towards water, the sewer stuff goes towards sewer, the INI goes towards infrastructure, and I don't think $5 a month to fix the infrastructure, get all this stuff paid off, and my sewer will be going up, so I will be going up the extra, the whole, the whole 699 for me on that first scenario. And it's worth it to me to see our city not only get their bills totally wiped out, paid off early, which means payments are smaller, interest payments are smaller, we save money by paying early, but it gets infrastructure fixed, which we are in dire need of. And I would be more than willing to pay a paltry $7 a month. For small businesses, I don't see that any of them would have a problem with $15 a month to get all of this done so they don't have to worry, as I've had in my shop on occasion, flooding, water breakage and problems and stuff like that, or no water. They will not have a problem paying 15 to get all this done and out and finally everything can come back down. That's just my opinion and the people I've talked to.
Peggy?
I kind of wanted to address the two people who came and spoke and also I got the letter from Eric Knoll about the, and I, it's complicated, it's really complicated, but that the, I'll see if I get this right, that the water rates are making more money, $150,000 a year or something, and that people don't want to be, they think that this water rate is too high already. And is there a way to take out the five and put it into tier two or something like that? Or, I don't know quite what, how you reduce your rates in a time when you need money. I mean, I don't understand what the two people were talking about, that the water rates were making money whereas sewer rates were not. Does that make sense?
That's why sewer went up on this scenario.
No, I understand that, I understand that, but they're talking about, why should you raise the rates on water?
Or not, on this one.
Well, you have the INI fee on there, they don't want to even do that.
Okay, well, the INI fee, and again, I take the way the state law reads. You want to read that for me? You got it?
Under ACA 14, 232110C, says that all or any part of the revenue derived from the rates and charges imposed and collected under the authority of this chapter may be used for accomplishing and carrying out the authority conferred by this chapter, including the pledging and use of those revenues for the payment of the principal of an interest on bonds issued under the authority of this chapter.
And to carry that farther, the bond covenants states it's the water and sewer. It's not just sewer and it's not just water, it's the combined water and sewer, is how the, I believe, and I don't have the-
The, the bonds that we have are not just sewer bonds, they are water and sewer bonds.
But they were used for sewer purposes.
Doesn't matter.
The money that would have been used for sewer purposes was used in the water department because it offset so that the money could be brought in from the bonds to use wherever. It was all one big pot of money.
What chapter does that address?
David?
So, I gather from what the attorney's read, you looked at the number three proposal?
Yes.
And in your legal opinion, as the city attorney, the one we pay for your advice on occasion, is there anything wrong with this?
I don't think there is. I think that it provides, and even if it's continued into the future, it would provide for a fund to create improved infrastructure. One of the scenarios that was presented a little while ago to you was, well, let's pay for it as we go. And if you never build up any extra money-
Yeah.
-you're either going to go back into debt as soon as these bonds are paid off, or you're not ever going to be able to improve the system and it's eventually going to wear completely out, and then we're going to be back to hauling water in a cart.
Well, and that's exactly the point that I worry about. This one actually moves towards fixing the infrastructure. For, for, for this city council to set up the city in a financial situation to take care of what everybody in this town knows and has known is a problem that we keep just kind of ignoring like Black Span Dam or whatever, just waiting for it to collapse so we can go into crisis mode. There's an opportunity here to see light at the end of the tunnel and actually have funds to fix something. And, and to me, that, that means a lot.
And that's part of the reason it's referred to as a fee, because it creates the ability for the city to pay off some of its indebtedness. Right now, I don't know, and Lonnie may have a better answer than this, we probably couldn't borrow very much money out there on the open market if we need to replace a water line or a sewer line or anything else in the department. But this gives us an ability to get some of that debt down so that then money can accumulate, either buy if we have to borrow again because of an emergency, or whether we have to build up a pot so that five years from now, we can extend sewer to 600 and whatever it was that don't have it.
We can buy in the cemetery a truck.
Christie?
And I think that the chapter from which you cited this, it pertains to refuse disposal. There is a separate chapter that relates to water works and water supply. And so I don't think what you read is pertinent to this.
What I'm trying, Mr. McLean?
Well, I was just gonna say, and I don't know what you're looking for, I mean, our meetings come, are coming up in two days?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So are we looking for a, to have a concrete kind of proposal that we want to present as our number one?
We have, we have to present a proposal for, for a public hearing for this to go forward.
Even though that's a workshop or whatever we're doing.
Yeah, this is a town hall.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we need a motion to-
Okay, first a motion that-
Just my line. Oh, sure.
In looking at this, I just wanted to say that I've looked at for accountability of these funds, how we're going to do that within the accounting system so that they will be segregated in separate accounts so we'll know exactly at any time where we are, how much we're collecting, how much we've spent on what and where. And so I just wanted to, there is procedure being developed if this passes for the accountability.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I like this, I like to make, I like to make a motion that we, we use this model as our formal presentation.
Second?
There we go. Got it.
I got a motion, a second, got discussion. Alright.
I have, I have a question, sorry.
Discussion.
Which is, I think this is great too. And if someone comes to the thing on, was it Wednesday? Can they bring their own, if they bring a rate schedule too and present it there, will they be able to do that as well?
Sure.
Okay. Yes, oh, sorry.
Point of order, don't we need to have an actual ordinance if this is going to be considered the public hearing on the ordinance? What is the, this is how I'm thinking about it.
We can have two things, we can have a public hearing or it can be a town hall meeting. We do have an ordinance, I think Tim has an ordinance ready, if we want to use this as a public hearing. If it's not a public hearing, then later on, we're going to have to have another point where we'll have to have a public hearing.
But I, oh, go ahead. The substance of the ordinance has to be published in the newspaper rather than a public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What I would suggest you do, and this is only a suggestion because this was advertised as a public hearing, is you could go ahead and open it for public hearing comments.